So, calling the meeting to order at six o'clock on January's... January, July 2nd, 2025. Welcome everyone to hearing for Susan and David and D2 Goodhouse for a variance. I need to make a couple changes to the agenda first. Number four, I need to add ex parte and no conflict questions. Here's Shenanigans.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so I need to question if there's any ex parte or conflicts. And the other one, number nine, is adding other business at the end.
What other businesses do we have?
I don't know.
Outside of the hearing?
I don't know. You just have to add it and see.
I'm going to take those changes to the agenda.
I second.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I think we're all engaged.
Yep.
Okay, so this is a zoning board of adjustment variance hearing. I'll read the warning, which states, "David and Susan Goodhouse have submitted an application for a variance for the property located at 3607 Route 106 in the town of Reading, Vermont. They wish to build a 28-foot-by-28-foot attached garage at the rear of the house. The existing house is sighted approximately three feet from the property line and within the required 15-foot setback pursuant to zoning ordinance 2.4.5. This proposed structure will follow the same building line as the house along the northerly property line." Okay, that's correct. I copied it from your thing. So is there any board member that has any conflicts with this property or the Goodhouses?
No.
No conflicts.
Okay, so no conflicts or ex parte reporting?
No ex parte communications.
Okay, are there any interested persons?
Just for clarification, it says 15 feet for the side setbacks. I checked with the town clerk in the zoning and it's five feet. So we should probably figure that out before we go through this.
That has to be amended, okay.
Bob, didn't you decline the original application because of the 15-foot setback?
I declined it because it was only three feet within that. And I think Hammondsville is 15 feet. We looked it up today, coisted it and it's five feet side.
Oh, well, that's very good to know.
We save you all some time.
Right.
But you can look it up, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll clarify that.
Yeah, the letter says 15, so that's what I was going.
I have a bet right now, I'm gonna ask you to.
Okay, well, then we will clarify that. Okay, so no one has signed up as an interested person. I received no emails to that effect. So, David, would you like to present any additional information that would help out this case?
Before we get into that, Jane, can I just have you do a roll call? Roll call so we know exactly who's in the audience and how they relate to the hearing?
Okay, there's David Goodhouse Jr., who lives in the property, correct? David Goodhouse, who owns the property. Sarah Norcross, who is a neighbor... I'm sorry.
Ken.
Ken.
Ken Morcross, who's another neighbor. I'm Jane, by the way. Richard?
Vanderboom. Did I get it right?
No, not you, the other Richard. Vanderboom, how could I forget that? Richard Vanderboom, who is an interested, like...
Resident.
Resident and member of the audience. Bob Allen, who is the head of the select board. Lisa Sylvester, who is also on the select board. And Richard Windish on...
And Bob is also the zoning administrator.
Yes, he's the zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you. Richard Windish.
Yes.
He lives further north of Hammondsville. He's one of our neighbors. W-I-N-D-I-S-H, yep.
Man, is it S-A-R-A or with an H?
Oh, no H.
Which?
So I just need to clarify something. I'm looking at the zoning and in Hammondsville, it looks like minimum setbacks are side 15. In Felchville, it's side 5. So I think, I'm not sure what you were looking at.
We're in Hammondsville and it's 5. 15 is the front and back setbacks. 5 is to the sides.
I'm not sure that's... Well, I'm not sure that's what I have written on my code. So maybe we will check with the town clerk and see what she was looking at just to make sure we're on the same page.
Now, you're all the experts, so you have it in front of you, so.
Yeah, so it says, "Building requirements: Minimum setbacks, front 35 feet, side 15 feet, rear 15 feet. Minimum frontage 100 feet."
That's in Hammondsville.
In Hammondsville.
Felchville is 35, 5, 5. Minimum frontage 75 feet. So I think according to this, and I think according to the zoning administrator's letter, it's supposed to be 15, but we'll circle back with the town clerk and just make sure that we're all talking the same language.
Okay. Okay, so David, would you like to add to any information?
Well, you know, our feeling is that, you know, we did build that house 200 years ago, three feet from property line. So that seems like it shouldn't, you know, that should be taken into consideration. We're not changing the footprint. We're not taking a piece of property and building it out to that. We just want to extend the existing house that's already on that footprint to enlarge it because their family's growing and it's gonna be their house. So our idea was, you know, that we're not really... We're not changing, we're adding on to the house, but we're not changing. We're not building to that property line. You know, we're just continuing the footprint that was put there 200 years ago. And, you know, I wasn't around to make sure it was 15 feet.
I don't think it existed 15 feet 200 years ago.
Well, you would have had to have a wizard.
Yeah. So that's, you know, so we didn't... We don't think it's a big deal in that sense to us. You know, I could understand that if we were, you know, 15 feet this way and we built to three feet within the property line, that would be a different issue.
Do you happen to know the lot dimensions roughly?
It's about this big.
Like if you did a dogleg?
Exactly, acre and it's long and narrow.
How far from the other side of the house to the other property line?
It should be on that.
Yeah, it's on the plot plan.
In the little garage you have there, you're not planning on doing anything with that? You're gonna keep that?
Oh, I see, that's the 67.
Oh, it's going to be eliminated in this?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's good to know. So they have a little garage to the south, existing garage, and they're planning on demolishing that.
The upstairs, those are the garage would be for storage and that will allow us to have one of the rooms, you know, become a bedroom in the house.
What is it, two-bedroom house, three-bedroom house?
Two.
Anything else?
So, the neighbors, you're the neighbors to the north. Do you have any issues with this plan?
I'd like to see what the building, you know, it's 28 by 28, how tall. I mean, I've talked to David Jr. and his wife and they say it's just gonna keep the same roof line and just go 28 feet further, correct?
Yeah, it'll be the same roof line, different pitch.
Yep, just as long.
Yeah, it's definitely, probably a whole other.
I don't have any objection to it, but it's not my decision.
And then the neighbor to the south are the... That's the house with the pool, right? In the back?
Yeah, I've had support from both neighbors if they wanted to chime in. I said it was fine, from Greystone and from South neighbor.
Well, they got the warning anyway, so they know that they could...
Yeah, they talked to me directly, just to see if they could help in any way.
Okay.
And Richard, you're joining us. Do you have any comments?
So I do, so I'm a neighbor up the road, but I'm also a attorney. I assisted the Goodhouses with the application and so I just wanted to speak a couple things. If you look at 6.3.1, our variances, I believe this meets all of the criteria. It's really the minimum, if you go through them, one by one. The physical characteristics of the lot, I don't have these characteristics, but it is a very large lot.
Actually, Richard, could we run through those variance requirements and then discuss each one and have you explain how you think it meets them? That would be really helpful.
That'd be great. So number one is there are unique physical circumstances.
Oh, can you wait a second, Richard? Because we're not up to it yet, okay? That's...
Oh, sorry.
That's...
Am I jumping ahead?
Yeah.
So no interested persons, comments by members of the public. Okay, sorry, now you can... Let's go through them one by one, okay?
So, level 6.3.1, if you folks have that, how... The one, first one is there are unique physical circumstances and conditions including irregularities and variances showing a small size, which I think we have here. This is a pretty narrow lot. And, you know, it's kind of a natural place to put the garage where D2 wants to put it. And it's really the kind of the way that this property would develop. I think it's important that the... To note that the house and the garage are in alignment. And that this is basically gonna be within the same setback, you know, the three-foot setback, which was non-conforming as the structure that's there. So it's really the characteristics of the lot that demands the placement of the garage. So, and then that really relates to that too. Because of the physical characteristics of the lot, there are no possibilities that the property can develop or constrictly firmly with the regulations. So I think those two relate. An unnecessary margin has not been created by the opponent. I think David Senior stated it well earlier. The house was put there, I don't know, 200 years ago or however long it was built before these zoning regulations existed. So this is what you would commonly refer to as a grandfather situation. Number four is also important. Variants authorized shall not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The way that D2 described this, this is basically an extension of the house. As I understand it, it'll be built to look like the area of New England, a house in that village cluster. So I'm not hearing anything that would cause, I don't believe, cause the pushing and concern. I believe that this would alter the character of the neighborhood. And then finally, the last, the last criteria is that the variance authorized will represent the minimum that would afford the relief requested and shall represent the least deviation possible from the regulations. So again, that ties back to what they're asking to do here, which is they're really asking to build a garage that meets the same directional line as the house. It's kind of the minimum that they're seeking to do. This isn't any change in the character of the development on the property. So I believe that we've checked all of the boxes here, 1 through 5, for the 6.3.1 criteria for variance.
Thank you, that's really helpful. I have to admit, there is nothing I would rather do than just say, "Sounds good to me, because it makes sense and it sounds good to me." I worry about precedent and I worry about prior precedent in the town and making sure that it's fair for people who have gotten or not gotten variances in the past and who might come down the road next. So on number two, the no possibility to develop the property to conform?
To extend the footprint of our house to stay in the community because if I have a detached garage, I can't build out the upper area to have more livable space and stay in the area.
Can you, is there any... Is there any way to have it take a turn and do like a dogleg and build out so that you can build into... So it looks from the map like...
Not keeping it attached.
Not keeping it attached?
Any change adds lots and lots of money, I mean.
And we're just trying to keep the existing footprint. That's the whole we're trying to do.
Realistically, you're starting to work it up like that.
Everybody has a different, you know, variance they come in for. So I wouldn't say it's a precedence because every situation's different.
So when you say keep the existing footprint, is the addition gonna be in what is currently footprint?
Off of the property.
You're expanding.
We're expanding the footprint, but we're staying with what was left of.
Yeah.
And we are taking the sun porch off, which is... So we're only adding additional about 20 feet and we're getting rid of the garage.
Oh, there's a porch behind it too?
No, the sun porch is just attached to where we're going to put the 20 by 28. It's just a little walk-in sun porch. So that will be removed. So the actual footprint isn't a foot 28 over. We're removing something and putting it in there.
So you don't have any other drawings or designs that are specific to the footprint, right? So I see on the sketch there's that.
There's that one, that's where the sun porch should remove.
Okay, I would like to make a suggestion that we have a site visit so you can explain all these things to us while we're there because it's hard to envision also from a drawing.
I'm trying to get builders and people going, so if it's necessary, that's fine. But we would like to keep this going.
Right, so we would hope within the next few days, maybe? Are you available?
That's the fourth one for us.
I know.
Well, my opinion is this is pretty straightforward. I'm not concerned about any precedents past or going forward because like, like you mentioned, every variance is a different animal. You know, we're tackling different conditions, different situations, different neighbors' input and I'm not... I mean, I'd be happy to do, if you wish, happy to do a site visit, but I don't think it's necessary in this case. And I happen to agree with everything the Goodhouses have said and everything Windish has said. I appreciate you being here as a direct neighbor and not having any issues with it. So if it were solely up to me, I would approve this so they can get their contractors in there and get started. If we have a site visit, then we have to have another hearing.
No, we don't have to have another hearing. We can go into closed deliberation and make a decision.
So can we do a site visit and then have it be deliberative session, not in public requirement, a warning after that and then just give the thing?
Exactly, yes.
So we're gonna delay the process? Because the only thing I was adding was we have this sun porch. It's not actually going any farther. We're actually not going full 28 feet off, we're only going about 20 feet. I'm sorry that that may have made confusion, but...
Well, I think your sketch is a little basic. So if it would have included all that and you would have shown, you know, what you were going to demolish and add on.
This is just what it would look like with the addition. I didn't know I had to add that.
I appreciate that, I have the vision to see that.
So I'm sorry, like Stacy said, I think it sounds great. And I have nothing... I'm not opposed to doing it, I just want to make sure it's done right. So where you have the box that says addition, how much of that box is pre-existing footprint? Any of it?
20 feet. 20, no, the sun porch. Oh, sun porch would be, what's it, probably eight by six, eight by...
It's, yeah, it's a 10 by 8 construction.
And you're demolishing the garage that's sitting out there by itself too? That's part of this.
So actually...
This is getting eliminated.
Actually, how many feet does the variance need? Like if you're demolishing somebody that's there and you're gonna use that space that is already there, how much?
We accommodated for that with the plot plan, with that not being there.
So their sun porch is probably something like this. So they're gonna take that out.
That's what's going away.
That's what he's talking about. So it's like eight feet this way, so he's actually just expanding the footprint.
So there's no actual footprint here.
Well, there's no actual footprint all the way out here.
So this is the addition, yeah, so we walk in with this basically sun porch.
And it goes all the way to the three-foot mark? So this whole footprint is already here?
It goes right to there. It has room for a propane tank, but it isn't quite. But it is on the front, so we're just not quite going, you know?
So how many feet is the new...
From there to there be?
So this is already...
This is all, this has already been figured out without this.
So is that this 24 feet?
Yeah, this is already... This is figured out without the sun porch included, so.
All right, so here's the house.
Draw the addition on top of the sun porch.
It's right here, this is the addition.
That's the addition.
It's no different than what's been here. It's just, the sun porch is in there and it's... Obviously, we're gonna have a better entryway and everything without the...
So once you demolish the sun porch from the house to the addition, it's 28 feet?
Yeah. No, yeah, 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 so this is figured, yeah.
So it's 28 feet from this line?
And the current width of the house is 28 feet.
That's 28 feet right there.
Yep, this is already, yeah, this is the 140. This is, yeah, nothing changes there.
So that's 140 to the back property line? This is the number I'm interested in, that to that. What is that?
The width of the sun porch, eight to 10 feet.
Yeah, eight to 10 feet.
So the whole addition is 24 feet?
Yep.
So if that's eight to 10 feet, then this is just 16 additional?
About, yeah, 16 to the rear.
Okay.
I was hoping it would help, but without...
But you're asking for 28 feet?
Yeah, with the...
So the width of the house going north to south is 28 feet. You're gonna demolish the sun porch and add 28 feet?
And it's a garage? Like it says on the application? And is there a room over it?
Two-bedroom garage with upper storage and...
So it's not living space upstairs?
Uh, currently.
So you said you were adding another bedroom?
Well, if we had more storage, we could.
Inside the existing space in the house?
You know, what they said is they used the... They use one bedroom as storage inside the house, so now they'll move the storage to the attic of the addition.
And then you'll have three bedrooms? So it's actually a three-bedroom house now?
Two bedrooms.
I don't know technically, but it's a two-bedroom.
Well, I mean, yeah, the other room was never made into a bedroom.
Okay, so it's a two-bedroom existing house?
Two-bedroom house with a room that could be a bedroom.
With a den.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, all right. But existing, there's three rooms that could be used?
Yes.
Okay.
Talk to my wife, she'll know better. She knows there's none over.
All questions answered? Richard?
So I have two things. One, the precedents past and in the future, which I really appreciate. This is really similar to Mark Corbin, when he wanted to have three extra feet for his room. And was denied for reason of, "We don't want to set precedents." And if that's gonna be the case, then why even have a variance here? I mean, if no neighbors...
Can you tell us your situation, how similar it was to really?
No, no, this was somebody else, they should have given it to us.
Well, let's hear, we don't know the precedents you're setting.
No, I'm on your side, I'm just...
Doesn't sound right there, but...
No, 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 I am, trust me. He was denied his variance because it was setting precedents. And if you're never gonna give precedents, then why even bother with the hearing?
Well, I think he was denied because he did not conform to those four points.
Well, he was denied because the board thought he was gonna do short-term rent negotiation. That's why he was denied.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I was just, I wasn't on...
Okay, so I don't wanna get off track here. That was a whole different board.
Okay, I just, as a public, I think they shouldn't be giving a variance because the neighbors don't mind. And like in Miami Beach, when you want a variance, they say, "What is the good of the public? What good is the public gonna do? Well, by them being able to build this, they're gonna be higher taxed and we're gonna get more tax money so they can spend it the way they want to." So that's the good of the public.
Well, we do want...
So they should be good of the public.
You okay with that?
We do want young families here. And, you know, we understand all that situation. We just know that there are certain rules that we... Whether we want to or not, there's certain rules we have to comply with. That's all, we're just trying to figure all this out. You know, trying to get as much information as we can.
It is a case-by-case situation, that was my point. But every variance is a case-by-case situation. And I think Richard's points and his responses to each point are very, very valid in this circumstance. I don't wanna get into a big, long discussion about the Corbin hearing because there's so many layers and it's quite a while ago. So, Bob, you had raised your hand, did you wanna say something?
I didn't raise anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw it.
As a zoning administrator, do you wanna weigh in on this?
The only thing that I would weigh in on is the fact that I'm governed by those dimensions. And that's why I denied D2's application because it is 15 feet regardless of what Kenny was told by somebody else. So, and even if it had been 5 feet, I'd have done the same thing. I'd have denied it. And I called D2, I explained it to him. I told him that it's options for conditional use of variance and variance is obviously the way to go. I have a concern about the distances. If you're going to allow this, where does it stop? And in what case? You say that every variance is different. Well, when it's a dimensional number, they're not different. It's exactly the same thing.
But they don't take into mention with the...
Corbin was able to get within two feet of his distance and it was denied. And I had to deny it because he was 23 feet instead of 25 or whatever the number is up there on the spectrum.
But where was the original structure that he was building off of? Was it next to it or did he extend his structure towards the boundary? Which is a totally different situation.
In his situation, I was involved and I wasn't a member of the commission, but I was a participant in the meeting and he was extending towards the property line. But in his case, he also, you know, he was denied in a five-member board. Three members denied him, one approved and one, I think, abstained. And again, I don't really wanna get into all that because I have theories about what happened there. He was extending towards a property line instead of keeping within the same distance from the property line. But again, I think a point that Rich was making is if... Why have these hearings for variances if we're going to always deny them? You're gonna deny them, we're gonna deny the variance and then...
You know, the thing we have to take into consideration is that not only is it not just us, but everybody. We're a very small town. The houses in this town are people that work for a living like us can afford. And we have to take into consideration maybe some variances so these people can add, other people can add on to make this town, you know, viable. I mean, you know, we just can't keep having Airbnbs and we're gonna have nothing here.
Richard?
May I speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I really appreciate most comments and I just kinda wanna bring it back to a couple of the points that I think are important for the board to consider. So if you read the regs that we're all bound by here, zoning ordinance, 6.3.1 is very, very specific about what the board is to consider. And the decision must be found, you know, it has to meet all five, which I had previously explained. But I think that the most important one is number four, which is that the variance authorized shall not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in which the property is located. Substantially, there are permanently... Substantially, or permanently impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property. With due access to renewable energy resources will be detrimental to the public welfare. And in this case, um, this is not, this does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It's another, it's basically an addition or residential structure. And, uh, it doesn't impair the appropriate use of, development of adjacent property and the important speed that is in alignment with the existing structure. So, I understand that every single application that comes before, uh, the town is handled on a case-by-case basis, which is why we have these zoning ordinance, is it why variance, uh, section is written the way that it is. So I would encourage the board to, uh, to look carefully at that, uh, the random decision. I don't think that there's anything here that was a foul in any of those criteria, as I explained earlier. And I think that the most important one, uh, about the essential character of the neighborhood is really, it goes to everything that was just said by David Senior, uh, about families living in the town in this middle center here. We're not having an additional use or basically allowing the family to stay in the neighborhood and expand their house, so. I would encourage the board to look at that, and I think that, um, you know, obviously in favor of this, uh, of this application.
Okay, I would just like to say that not one of these four items is more important than the others. So they all hold equal weight. So you're citing number four as, like, being the most important part of it?
No, it's, 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 it's the most important part of the comments that we just received. Uh, each one of these has to be found, and I agree with that. All five of them are important. And you have to find that all five that, that, that what I was doing was responding to the comments that we just heard.
Can, uh, can you tell me more? Can you make me comfortable with number two? That there's no possibility the property can be developed in con, conformity with the setback?
So, the important thing here is to note that what D2C sees to do, what the NCC can do is to expand the house to create the, a garage, an attached garage. So, uh, if you, if you, uh, sure, if you look at the property, it's very narrow, and you could put a garage somewhere else on the property, but it wouldn't be attached to the house. And it would also be a little wonky if it was offset to be fifteen-foot setback. Then you have a diagonal or zigzag building sitting there. So, uh, the, I mean, I think that the original placement of the house before the ordinance was adopted is really the controlling factor here when you, when you consider these, uh, these criteria.
And I think another key factor that we should consider is the mantra right now is, we wanna create affordable housing. He makes a very good point, that allowing them to add on and create an expansion of his family staying where it is, you know, he's been and his family's been, creates an affordable housing option versus offsetting it or creating a, a L-shaped house. It increases construction costs considerably when you do that. Where if you keep the same gable, it, it reduces construction costs. So we wanna, we don't want them to move. We don't want them to sell their house and move to Windsor or something. We want them to stay here, expand their house, make it more livable. And I think we should have hearings like this every week where people come to us for variances.
No, please, not anymore.
Maybe not every week, but, you know, investing in our community is key.
We are investing in our community.
From small to large amounts, so.
We are investing in our community. We are.
I think we definitely need to consider this in our decision.
Well, I'm listening to what Robert was saying. Go on, Robert.
Yeah, if I can continue, then I'll page shout it down here by Stacy or anyone else.
Did I shout you down? I am so sorry.
I wanna say as a zoning administrator, I don't care. I don't have an opinion either of whether you grant it or whether you don't grant it. Uh, D2C and I had a nice conversation, you know, of saying what I had, and I am, it's a hard and fast rule to me that if it says fifteen feet, it has to be fifteen feet, otherwise I have to, and I can send it to you. So that's kind of where I'm at with this. I, I truly don't have an opinion that you should or should not grant the variance. That is entirely up to the board.
And we're a small town. We can't take care of our town, and what's the purpose of the whole thing?
Right, you're, everybody made very valid comments. However, there's still the rules, so maybe the rules need to be changed. So that's like, you know, I mean...
Well, I do find it very, very interesting that, that we have a village, and we have a village. We have Felchville, we have Hammondsville, and there's different criteria for each of those villages, which I can, the confusion Ken had with, with Calista, Calista, I guess, earlier today. She might've been looking at the Felchville five foot, and then just automatically assumed that because it's the village, it's the village.
Felchville's just a lot more compact. It's reality-based.
But even if it was, even if it was five foot, it's still, it still wouldn't comply, even if it was five feet.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question. If it's public deliberation and you make a decision right now, is it just, uh, a yay or nay with nothing in writing? Could you do that? Or does it have to be written anything?
No, I think we have to write what we have stated.
We can vote now.
We can.
Formalize it in a letter.
Yes, you do that.
Or we can go into private deliberation.
I think there is room right on the variance for you to write the answer if you wish.
Right.
I don't have one right here in front of me, but I do think it's true. Normally, there is a separate one.
We do have to issue a formal letter.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
For their aid.
And we can do that in a deliberative session?
If we need to go to a, a deliberative session?
For the process of writing the letter to incorporate some decision points?
No, I think if we make a decision in public,
Yeah.
then we can deliberate, you know, or, or edit the letter to formalize it.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be, because of prior relationships, be judged on from somebody on the board also. Prior business relationships.
What does that mean?
What's that mean?
I've worked and been fired from someone on the board.
Oh, I don't think it matters.
We as a board are totally neutral. That's why we took this job, to work for the community, to be neutral in...
Job. Where's my paycheck?
Excuse me, volunteer job, to try to be neutral. I myself, just to cover all bases for the future, like to make a site visit and then have a deliberative session.
How fast can that happen?
I'm available.
I'm, I'm available. I can be there in two minutes.
Should we head there now?
Now we have the planning commission meeting.
At seven.
Cancel it.
How about tomorrow at noon?
Uh, tomorrow is, is an exception for me. I have a very busy day tomorrow.
It's light out late. We don't have a heavy meeting.
Yeah, we could do it after this meeting if you want to. After we do our PC meeting.
And what exactly would we like to confirm on a site visit?
I don't need to confirm anything.
I'm just wondering, in general.
I just wanna see. I don't even...
'Cause our neighbors are telling you it's fine. They've lived right there and see it every day.
But they're not making the decision.
I know, but I just want you to take their input into consideration.
I am taking everything into consideration, and for the benefit of you, I wanna make a site visit because I think that that will, whatever decision is made, that'll be the one, the right decision. That will prevent anything in the future from...
Can I do it in the morning?
Tomorrow.
No.
Bob?
I got just one. I agree with Jane a hundred percent because her decision is subject to appeal by the other townspeople. I think you should follow the decision-making process of the letter in law.
So this can't get appealed now?
What's that?
It can't get appealed now?
It could always be appealed.
Yeah, it can always be appealed.
It can always be appealed.
So what do you think, Bob? In your opinion, what are we?
I think, I think you gotta, uh, all the eyes, all the p's, as Jane just mentioned. Then if there's an appeal, you can say this is...
That makes sense.
I would just wanna say too, that just some people have a lot of trouble visualizing something on a two-D piece of paper, especially when it's just hand-drawn, that seeing something in three dimensions makes it a lot easier to write and write around.
Mm-hmm.
Fourth of July, Saturday?
I can, I can do fourth of July.
I can do fourth of what, in the morning?
I can do, uh, I wanna go to Brownsville, but I can do it in the morning. How about Friday morning?
I can, I'll be home.
Okay. Um, what works for you?
Anytime. We'll make sure we go to the right house.
Not the big one.
'Cause they're two different addresses.
Can you do nine years after, right?
Uh, yeah, nine's fine.
Let's do nine.
Okay.
Can we do nine? Friday morning?
Okay.
Um, so I think the way we're supposed to do that, but I defer the chair, is to adjourn here. We can adjourn this hearing to a time certain, Friday morning at nine,
Mm-hmm.
to conduct a site visit. And there should be some minutes of the site visit. And then
I can do the minutes.
that would not require an additional warning, as long as we are adjourning it to a time certain. Then can we make our decision by public deliberation at, at the site visit? Or we could just go into deliberative session?
We can go into deliberative session and then just
Okay.
send you notification.
I think we can turn this around quickly. This?
Yeah.
By Monday?
By Monday?
Yes.
We can...
Yeah.
By Friday? Yeah.
By Friday we can do.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to do that.
Alright, so I, I move to adjourn this hearing till Friday at nine AM, uh, for a site visit at the property of thirty-seven oh six.
Thirty-six oh seven.
Oh, God, I'm reading the wrong one. Thirty-six oh seven. No, thirty-seven oh six. No. Why does it say the wrong thing on it? Thirty...
Thirty-six oh seven.
Thirty-six oh seven. Sorry, thank you. Thirty-six oh seven. After which time, I think, we'll be prepared to, um, make a decision.
Yes.
So there's my motion.
And we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting our Ps.
There's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Any other business for the... Any other business for the zoning board of adjustments tonight? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the ZBA?
The ZBA. Uh, second?
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
See you Friday morning and night.
Friday.
Do we have anyone online, Will?
Nope.
Okay, good. Um, so let's, uh, start and call the planning meeting to order. Thank you, Jane, for the zoning meeting. Um, we're gonna make this quicker and efficient tonight, since we've just had the zoning hearing. Um, any changes to the agenda before we carry on? Okay.
The, the, I guess we, I can speak about it, um, under other. But you didn't put my little parking abandoned vehicle thing on there. I don't know if you want, I can do it next meeting, or we can do it under other. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, let's do it under other.
It's gonna be very brief.
Okay. I don't think we have to vote on that. You can just do it under other. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
The day change of this really messed with my scheduling, and I didn't, um, get it in till the end. Uh, approval of minutes of June eleventh. Shanann, thanks for taking those. Any comments or corrections?
I don't have any. I move to approve them.
Are you gonna second?
Or you have?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm looking for the...
Okay, the minutes are approved. Um, any reports? Mail and email. Did we get an email?
Yes, and I can't, that's what I'm trying to look for, and I sent it to both of you.
I have it.
So I can't find it.
I have two emails, right? One from Carol Burner,
Right.
which I don't necessarily think that was
It wasn't on...
should be to us. It should be to the select board.
I forwarded that to the select board.
Okay.
Carol Burner was asking a road question. Um, so it should be in your mailbox.
When did that come?
Today.
Oh, okay.
July first at eight forty AM.
Yesterday.
Potholes on Whitmore Circle.
Dangerous conditions.
Broken axle. I'm one of her clients.
Somebody needs to slow down.
Yeah. And then the other, um, was from Aaron Grogan, uh, Grasshopper Lane, wanting to discuss Class Four roads.
Great, which is our topic tonight. Um, nothing from the regional planning commission, energy board. It's recently presented to the select board. Bob, anything to report from the zoning administrator besides tonight?
Basically, just heard the biggest thing that I had going. I've had a few permits. They're pretty small jobs, uh, no major houses, barns, decks, or anything like that. Uh, you can see them. They've all been posted. A couple of pools, and that's basically it.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the ZBA besides the very top?
No.
The, um, quick, quick question. There were a couple new houses being built, um, up in this area. Seven, was it off, one off of Seven Mile? Or have those been completed? People are living in them now?
That's a little bit of an issue. I don't get noticed when they have completed their building. Uh, there's one on Whitmore Road. I don't think that's complete yet. Uh, there's one on North Puckinrush, uh, uh, just off of Puckinrush, actually, uh, like where Ellen gets. Just beyond where she lives, or her property on Puckinrush. John is here. He might be able to tell you more about new, new places that's going on and still going on, if you will, than myself.
Yes, you got, uh, on, uh, Miss Hill, you've got a house being built. Uh, I would be expecting that, uh, later on in the summer. I ended up last fall. That's interesting, 'cause it has a foam foundation for, they actually put a concrete between two forms. It's interesting. It's a specific way, story and a half house. And last fall is about twenty-five percent done, and we're done this year. Then you also have on Brownsville's road. It's interesting because, uh, Miss Hill has two parcels that were on, on, on Twenty Mile Street. And so this man has been working on a stream house for four years. And, uh, and as I checked, it last fall was about, oh, sixty percent finished. He hopes to get it done in the year, we can hear us also. That's the second one. Um, we also have, uh, Barney, uh, building a new house on that split property there on, uh, in South, in, uh, off of Bay of Climes. And that's a slow process, too, between materials and labor. They're all slow. They're all slow. Um, then you also have, uh, a new one going up very slowly on Puckinrush, ready for his daughters there on that one. And then you have Callie on Jenny Road. Hopefully, it'll be done this year. I mean, I have a discussion here, you know, how far along it is. And we had, uh, a nice, uh, a nice small house, a tiny house, was built on Malagash. And that was put up for sale this whole of the week. And, uh, we have the, uh, some of the houses that are being built. That's just, actually, for for ready, we've been about eight houses the last couple of years, which has been unusual for us. And I'll make, I'll make this comment now. You also have Hayden Hill. And how many here have been up Hayden Hill? They should go up. That's behind Dean's house on one oh six across the bridge. We have two huge houses up there. One at the very end of the road, and one partway up. And there's actually another log cabin, and another house on the left-hand side. What's interesting about Class Four roads, and it comes to my interesting, assessing property, we have a land schedule. And for those roads that is Class Four, we have to reduce the land schedule by percentage because of the, of the Class Four road, where a Class Three road is typical for law. These people also did not have electricity. They did underground all the way up to the final house. And this, to me, looking at the assessing example... And this to me, looking at the assessing example, is some of these roads like this, who are class three, you have a higher assessed value. Which would help in the problem that towns like that, you only Redding all towns, your basic cost, which will only go up, if you do nothing, it's still gonna go up. So where can you get other income? Well, to me, class four road is a possibility. You have, you have the, uh, you know, the, the development that we had a long time ago, there was some discussion about whether roads were being formed or not, it was a standstill. And that's, and then now we have those two ends, where we do have houses, but nothing in the middle.
You're talking about, you're talking about wrist, the wrist hill, that's the HOA that kinda went right.
When I started this business about twenty-five years ago, you could drive around, gotta be careful. Today I wouldn't wanna drive around. So there's still about three or four locks back in that, that raised, where the only, the only one lot could be used off the Twenty Mile Street Road. So I think, I think, you know, as a town, we have to look at what's the best use of our money, raising some of the value, because it's a class three road. The best example I can give, and Bob will give us this, Jenny Road, not Jenny Road, but Spear Cemetery, used to be great hunting territory. It was, it was woods, and Burke and Matt and two young guys in the, in the business of real estate, bought that, divided up into surveying lots, had power going in. And what you see today, not what was there originally.
You're talking about Spear Cemetery?
Spear Cemetery.
Well, that used to be Redding Farms.
Yeah. I used to grow horseback riding up there, for a hundred mile riding, and you just, your, the posts on the, with the public, so the horses are gonna be sparking going up over here. You didn't wanna look in the car very much. So there's what can happen, if you have a road, you know, the success of your power, all those things happen. The other one here is, Puck Shop, that's one more thing. You have lots on one other road, and that's Brownsville Road. That starts off a class three with power, then it's a class three with no power, then it's a class four, then it's an old log, an old road that used to use law. I can't remember the name of that one, you probably remember the name of that one? I can't either. Anyway, so it's actually a pretty good road, the laws have always said it's water, but there are houses out to the corner of Jenny Road.
Chase Four Corners Trail.
Chase Four Corners Trail, yeah. Not Jenny Road, Chase Four Corners. So all these things, you have to consider, I think when you look at Redding, all the things around the town are Redding, things are happening. So, we are getting new houses, we're very, very diligent about what we have, and some of our class roads may, should take a second look, that's all I'm saying.
So you're thinking we should take a closer look at possibly converting class four to class three?
Some of them, yes.
Okay, not enough course.
Some of them, I think you have to look, I think, most people haven't looked at what's up there. I think it'd be good, plenty of nobody planning, if you took those roads and see what is built there. You know, and maybe supplying, at least they've given up to, uh, the one development, and it'd be good to see that, because I think you can see what could happen. That's it for me.
John, is the house at the bottom of Newton Road finished? Is the house at the bottom of Newton Road finished yet?
Uh, Newton Road?
Yeah, one all over.
That one's finished. That, that new house is finished there. The one down along the hill?
Yeah, one at the very bottom.
Yeah. On the left-hand side, that one's done. They're still, I mean, they're still working on it, but they're living.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not completely finished?
From my standpoint, it's finished.
From a taxi.
They're being assessed after being a finished property. The one that, also, I forgot one, also one still, Jenny, you have the new Maple's Sugar, uh, complex, which is state-of-the-art buildings, it's amazing what they look like. Again, it'd be nice to look, take a look at, it's really something. And, uh, it's, it'd be interesting, he'll have, he's planning a study next spring, and, uh, that really has made very good use of that land. And the buildings are where we all build, and also, you know, as a, a home, connected to that also. So that was another one that was being, forgot about that one. That was the only one, that's quite a, that's quite a never before here.
So I think John has launched us into number five?
Yeah, that's a great, uh, great intro to number five, which is talking about, um, possibly updating the town highway ordinance, which is governing the class four roads, among other things. Um, so let's just do a quick introduction to how we got here. Um, we finished up revisions to the town plan as required by the state, sorry, not the town plan, the zoning ordinance as required by the state. Uh, and had kind of a general cleanup of trying to bring some pieces together in that, that had, um, you know, disconnected over the years with amendments. And we were talking about things that we could, uh, that we should be focusing on next. Um, we talked about it in this group a lot, we asked the Select Board for their input, and one of the things that has come up with residents is the use of the class four roads, and the multiple constituencies who use them. So, um, the Select Board has tasked us with taking, taking a look at that, getting feedback, getting, um, user reactions, user opinions. It's not just tonight, it's gonna be, uh, as many nights as it takes, um, to, to get people's experiences. And you can submit something to us in writing, if you'd like, by using the, the PC, mm, email, which I can read, maybe Jane can read it, or Stacy. I don't know, off the top of my head. It's something like PC@Redding.net, something like that.
PC@ReddingVT.net.
PC@ReddingVT.net. Um, and what we're really looking for is how, how people use the class four roads, um, concerns they have, and the reason we're talking about it is because we've gotten feedback with concerns. Suggestions for how the town's ordinance might or might not be improved. This may amount to nothing. We may make no recommendations about the class four roads. Um, if we are getting feedback that makes it seem like we can improve the town's, um, policy on the class four roads in a way that makes sense, we'll make a recommendation to the Select Board at some point. But it's really just an exploratory research mission to see if we should be doing something different. I've done a lot of reading about other model, uh, policies in other towns. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns has its own model policy. Um, some of them are very slim, you know, if you go up to Stowe, it's huge. So there's a lot of resources out there for us to take a look at and, and see what makes sense for Redding. It's not intended to take anything away from anyone, it's really intended to figure out the best use that maximizes the asset and benefits the most people and the most users. So, just wanted to get that out, um, right off the, the bat. We have one, the one email from, uh, the Grasshopper Lane resident said that she wanted to share experiences, but also wanted to know about the type of updates that are on the table. At this point, there are no updates on the table. It's really to get user feedback and then think about if we even need to have any updates. So that's the preliminary starting point. We're a pretty small group here tonight, happy to hear anyone who has any thoughts to share, if we can keep it a little compressed, so that everyone has a chance who has any thoughts about it, that'd be great. And I'm sure we're gonna have this conversation more at the next meeting and the one after that, if we need to. Um, and then start to talk about other models and, you know, get ideas from other towns and see if any of those fit here in Redding.
And I think it's really important that we reach out to the community. We've heard a lot of negative use of the class four roads, which has caused all kinds of controversy. And it would be, also, if there are people out there who love class four roads, it'd be great to get their input and as to why as well.
That's a great point.
To create a, a rounded conversation, instead of just hearing all the negatives.
Well, I think the negatives were the, the state of the class four roads, that everybody loves to use them, like the horseback riders love it, but they can't, because some of them are so torn up that it's dangerous for the horses, or bikers can't use it, you know, so, um, I think it was more about what the state, that there, certain class four roads are
Condition.
Conditions that they might
And then it's hard to pinpoint the overall condition of all the class four roads, because you have hurricanes, you have the rainstorms, use.
Well, and weather, changing weather patterns is definitely a contributor.
It's a major contributor.
Um, you're reminding me, Stacy, that I found a nice list, actually on West Windsor's town website, about groups that we should reach out to. Like, uh, VAST, and GMHA, and Redding Rats, um, some of these groups that are users of those trails. So, we're trying to cast as broad a net as possible and get as much input as we can. Um, and they may not be aware of this, they may not read the Front Porch Forum, but as part of this process, we should probably reach out to some of those groups and say, interested in your feedback. So it's open for anyone to comment. This poll is really distressing. If I'm lobbying and weeping.
Splitting the audience.
I know, listen Bob, and we've been right with me. Ray, your thoughts?
Okay, well, I, I will comment on, um, specifically two class four roads in town. One being, um, Kittredge pasture road. That road, um, for years was a relatively good, smooth road. There were, um, water barriers on both sides of it, and culverts that crossed it in a couple of places, and a lot of water bars. The large, off-road vehicles, the car, especially the caravans of them, that go up through there, they love the conditions that are really nasty, they use them when they're muddy. And what has happened over the years is they've splashed all the dirt out of the roads, that filled up what used to be the water gullies on the side. And now the roads are all rocks, instead of something that horses can comfortably ride on.
Is this the, the trail that Jeff was
No.
Goes up past Dave, and turns into the class four.
Okay.
Um, and that, that goes all the way down into, um, South Woodstock, where it hooks up with, um
Noah Woods.
Yeah, Noah Woods comes out of there. And especially that lower section, that's been pretty much destroyed. VAST went through a few years ago and did a ton of work on it, and again, there was a couple of those big rides. And it just destroyed all the work that they did. There are two culverts on, just up past Dave, Appleton's house. One of them now is completely crushed, and it just doesn't work at all. The other one has been displaced, and it's now sticking up above the road, it's about this, this high above the road. Horses now have to step over that, of course. Some horses don't take too kindly to, but at any rate, um, the other one being Rich Trail. Rich Trail is now completely impassable. You cannot go all the way through Rich Trail anymore. Um, all of the dirt washed off of the ledge up there, and it's just pure ledge. Um, I, I don't know how Wiswell gets his vehicles up there to do their shivering anymore, but, um, that was several years ago, when, uh, I don't know, roughly four years ago, when Goodhouse logged up in there, they rebuilt all of the water bars, and everything was great. Built again another one of those big caravan rides, they took out all the water bars, and it was only, I don't know, I think it was less than a year that Eve, you can probably tell, where there was a storm. And all the water came down, went all the way down to Eve, washed out the whole road down there, took a party upon, I mean. So, you know, I, I think there needs to be something that can be done to prevent that. I mean, if those kinds of organizations wanna use the road, they should be responsible for maintaining it. I mean, when GMHA uses these roads, we do all of the trail work on them. I mean, you know, if there's trees down, we clear the trees. Obviously, you can't go in there now and rebuild these roads, so. We've got the whole section of Kittredge pasture road that's impassable anymore, and Rich Trail just can't be used. I've had to reroute the hundred mile ride, um, to a different trail over there.
I think unfortunately, um, those groups of trucks that have been going up there. Whoever was organizing it isn't here anymore, but the people who did go up it know about it and are bringing other people
Yeah, they sold back soon.
Right, so.
Well, the, you know, with the, with the internet maps, you can really see maps of these trails in a lot of different places, like the Polaris app, or, um, you know, X-trails or All-trails, you can see them everywhere. So anybody who's looking, although I was looking at Redding's, uh, policy on class four roads, and I, I realized that they don't open until June fifteenth. Even though their big, uh, Jeep tra- trail rides at the end of May.
Well, we talked about that, uh, previous meeting, and there was discussion whether it's June fifteenth or May fifteenth, and you said it was May fifteenth. And again, there are gates at the bottom of, um, Kittredge pasture road that we used to close, uh, until late fifteenth, that we don't close anymore. I think that should be something we looked into again.
Well, at least for ATVs, it's June fifteen. I don't know how that relate, if, under the current, under our current ordinance, it's, that is an ordinance, I was gonna say, maybe just a policy, it's an ordinance. So wheel-type all-terrain vehicles are allowed to use class fours from June fifteenth to December first only. I don't know how that applies to larger recreational vehicles.
Yeah, and
But maybe that's a, maybe that's an update that
Damage to trail
We could make, right?
I think, uh, they are the, the fifteenth, when we had a meeting with the ATV club.
Yeah.
We set it up to June fifteenth, and told them at that time, depending on conditions, we would open them up, uh, for Memorial Day weekend. And when Dennis Allen was president of that particular, he would come to us in May and say, I don't think the roads are in, uh, condition where we should open them before June fifteenth. And then other years he would come and say, hey, it's been a really dry spring, can we have a ride, can we use them, uh, Memorial Day? And we usually went along with his recommendations on the ATVs. As far as large vehicles, I'm not sure, but if there's any date on that, unless you look in the, uh, highway orders.
So the highway ordinance says ATVs June fifteenth, and it doesn't have a, doesn't have a discretionary thing, so maybe if that's what the, maybe if that's the, the practi- practice, the passive practice of it, maybe we should update it to say, or as designated by the Select Board. That's, that's a change.
Well, and at that time, it was probably only ATVs utilizing those class four roads, and then it evolved at a later date into what it is now.
To any large degree, you are correct, Stacy. To any large degree, you are correct, it was mostly ATVs, or sideways, I was just
So, it's definitely something to consider, expanding the types of vehicles.
Yeah.
But how does that get policed then?
Well, I think, I think for consideration and conversation, I think we should talk about the gates. If it's June fifteenth to December first, then maybe it should be considered putting gates or locking gates. And then I think, just as with the Vermont one hundred, run, race, whatever it is, we we want the organizers to respect Redding and our trails and our properties, so if we sort of reach out to those organizers and ask them to work with us, cooperate with us, so they're not shutting down roads, using roads
Well, okay, so
Damaging roads.
I live on Town Hill Road that goes up to the Rich Trail, and every few weeks, there'll be a line of six, seven, eight, ten vehicles go
Not necessarily with an organization.
Right, so.
I mean signage, signage could help, the same way we post our, our roads. The, our, the town's, uh, highway ordinance, um, which was adopted in two thousand and seven, by the way, so it, it's, it's almost, almost twenty years since an update. Says that the Select Board that the select board, actually says a select man, can control those Class Four highways and trails, including prohibiting or restricting wheeled vehicles during mud and snow season by use of signs or barriers. So, it's, it's contemplated in there, it just isn't, uh, spelled out in any way and it's not, um, I don't think in practice it's done that much.
The gating of Brown Schoolhouse Road was done and any landowner up there used to have a key that was beyond the gate. At some point in time, somebody either didn't have a key or just wanted to destroy the gate. If you go up and look at it, it's still there, but it looks like a beam. They obviously hit Chandra with something or it smacked out in the middle of the bank until it opened up and the bar was still there. However, the VAST, uh, snowmobiles use that as well. So, I am not sure, uh, how gating that is gonna work when you talk about ATVs and VAST. We'd have to see if there was a way that the VAST could get around the gate, but a wheeled vehicle could not. And that's difficult because the snowmobiles today are as wide as an ATV.
But the snowmobiles by definition are usually on snow, so they're the ones, they, they don't seem to be the ones who are churning up a lot of mud.
No, but, but the point I'm making is the fact that if we gated.
Then they can't get through.
We gotta make a way for the snowmobile to get around. And when you do that, you've probably made a way for an ATV to get around when the mud season comes. Now, not a pickup, uh, but an ATV or something like that, so.
Yeah.
You'd have to take both into consideration.
Mother Nature's a bit on our side with that. Um, you know, snowmobiles will be on snow and ATVs generally don't operate very well on snow, so.
There may be some, so we're gonna have to research this a little bit too. There may be some state law involved in, in gates that lock, but I, I'm not entirely sure about that. So, we may, as part of this process, we may need to reach out to, um, Mark or Vermont League of Cities and Towns to just get the parameters of what is okay to do.
I, I would go out on a limb here and say, I don't believe that we are supposed to law a town right away.
I would agree.
Uh, we did it for it. The clubs, we did it for it. The clubs and the lawmakers did it, but they made sure that everybody that had a piece of property beyond that gate had a key. And we had one here for whatever reason. So, I don't know if you wanna go.
That might have even have gone too far.
That you can actually gate.
Yeah, I, it would be worth looking at. I am not, uh, confident that one can gate and lock a town road. John?
Yes. The other rainbow in this whole place, which is the latest phenomenon, you can go online and look up all they call trail, those are all Class Four roads, and people now get together, not necessarily all organized, with their, with their vehicles, like, uh, Toyota runners where they, under plates and they look and they take a challenge of going over these old roads and doing it. So, it's beyond just ATVs now. And you've actually go online and see all these things and they're indicated with red lines, is it really bad, so on and so forth. But a lot of people get weekend recreation with their vehicles doing this and they gear up their vehicles to survive going in these roads, the deeper the ditch, the better it is. So, this is a new rainbow and I don't know how you can pull that.
I think that's what we're digging into.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough. I mean, how you, this is, you can find the maps on Google if you look for it.
Yeah. Well, and so, I, I had the opportunity last weekend, when we had a big yard sale, uh, at the neighbors, to sit out on their lawn and watch the Ridge Trail all day long for two days. And it was pretty, it was pretty cool, actually. There were a couple bikers who went through and I asked if they went all the way from Brown Schoolhouse and they said, yes, it was pretty gnarly. Um, there were a couple trucks, sort of trucks and Jeeps. There was one motorbike. Um, there were two horsewomen who skirted up the side and they didn't come back. So, I assume, they may have veered off to the right though, because the horses can go off into the, the neff land. Um, there was a hiker, there were a couple runners. So, it really was a neat, uh, validation of kind of the recreational importance of these roads. It was really cool. I didn't realize how many people were actually there on a beautiful Saturday, but it was important to remember.
And Ellen Roberts said, we have, we have several camps that would need y'all and brothers, I think a lot, gate, need to get to their camps. I have a hard time finding, they're really out in the woods, you wouldn't believe where they are. But, so you have to consider those people and as Robert said, at least they should have keys so they can get into their camps. We have, so we have probably all four camps like that I can think of.
I mean, we'll, we'll definitely figure out what the state of the, uh, state of the state is on lock gates. I don't think it's supposed to happen, so that's not.
It's a morass, it's a morass when you enter.
Yeah, it's a, that's not really, in, in my mind, that's not really what, what's on the table. Um, so, when I look at the town map and I look at, say, the Ridge Trail or Kittredge pasture, or I think it's the Mount Moses Trail, they look like they are identified not as Class Four town highway, but as a dotted line legal trail. Do, do either of you know that?
We have, our new maps, which we've been using now for a while, we have some of those on that map.
Yeah.
We get every year. The other thing happened a number of years ago, when the peasant problems and murder, where people build a house in the middle of a Class Four road, caused a few problems. And the state gave some money to towns to research all their old roads. And Laura Alexander was still there, was walking around doing things. And she did, and she came to me with a box full of notes. I said, Laura, don't do any good. So, I found a mapping person that was one of the people we worked with. They went out together and we have that map in my office.
I would love to come see.
What she can remember and where they were and so forth. Now, that doesn't give you up-to-date stuff, but it does at least locate them. And we have all, all the ones we could locate on our town map and our quadrant maps.
And those are designated Class Four roads?
Yeah. Yeah, well, it didn't take Class Four roads, but shows you where these roads are. We don't always do it.
So, they may not be Class Four roads and it could just be historic trails.
Yeah, it would be help, that would probably be helpful for you.
Yeah, it, it would be great to get kind of the definitive resource on what's a real Class Four road versus a legal trail. Right.
And there is, there is.
Back when the, when the state did that, I was chair of the Ancient Roads Committee for the town of Redding. And I've, I've still got tons of maps and notes in my basement, uh, but. Don't bring me your box, don't bring me your box. We went back and found all of the roads that used to be Class Four that got thrown up back in, and Bob can tell you what, what year's better than I can. It was a long time ago, the majority of them were thrown up. And we, we went back to the state and tried to recover a couple of them and it was just impossible. There were, there was just no way to recover them again. And I, we talked about it with the select board and at the time, we all agreed, we will never throw up another road in this town, because once you do that, you're never gonna get them back again. So, there are a couple of roads, um, that are still dotted lines, that are still officially Class Four roads. Stone Chimney Road is one of them. Stone Chimney Road still shows up on the map as a dotted line all the way up to Chase Four Corners.
It does, yeah.
And that's still a Class Four road for the town of Redding. You can't use it any longer. There was a flood back in, what, seven, nineteen seventy something.
Seventy-three.
That wiped it out there. You can get quite a ways up, but you can't get all the way up to Chase Four Corners anymore.
But back to.
It's still a Class Four road.
Back to John's comment, though, converting Class Four roads to Class Three roads has been, in some cases, very beneficial to the town.
Uh, we had, yeah, I was gonna say, like, not as a general rule, but I think we should look at that if you're looking at all these things. I would, especially look at Hagan Hills, see what that looks like. And do ones for wrist hills and so forth. Uh, those are probably the main ones. There are a couple other ones, but those are probably the two mains, I think, whether it has been construction. And my only standpoint is that if you're a Class Three and it's power, the value of the land is different, that is, that's what it's now.
So, we could look at, look at that too.
But if it was a, if you, like, Wrist Hills, I guess that's a problem with that trail. Wrist Hill was downgraded to a trail which horses and bicycles could only use. Wouldn't the property be worth more money because no, no cars could drive on it?
Uh, you could drive on it twenty years ago.
But now, but now if it was downgraded to a trail only, I would think the property would be more valuable.
I'd wanna walk it with a chainsaw.
But for your assessment, you could assess it higher, right?
I can assess a road, but we assess it very low because you, you can't get through one.
So, accessibility is worth the value.
That could be point five or point four. Now, that's. Let me address that too.
You're gonna find in our ordinance, if Class Four roads, if the landowners on those roads wish it could be brought up to Class Three so that the town can maintain them, it is at their expense. And if we were to say, we're gonna change this from Class Four to Class Three, it will be at our expense. And I do have to say, the expense of changing a road from Class Four to Class Three.
Tremendous.
Plus the maintenance of it, it'll take you years, and I'm talking a lot of years, to get it back to tax dollars unless there's a huge development on the end of it somewhere.
Right.
It just won't pay back, especially Hagan Hill, that's straight up.
Which I think is an important point. As we're discussing this, you know, the HOA, development of an HOA is permit, or can be permitted with a conditional use or variance, um, but the landowner sponsoring the HOA is completely and totally responsible for the upgrade, maintenance of that road in perpetuity. And then it's shared within the HOA to whomever buys parcels and builds on them.
Yep. So, what's the current process now? Say, I wanna go improve Kittredge pasture. Do I have to get permission for that or can I just take my equipment up there and bring some gravel and have at it?
You, you, being the town right away, you're supposed to get permission to do any work on the road. We, to my knowledge, have never denied anybody permission to fix up the town road based on what they wanted, wanted to do. Uh, I, I can't think of a time that we said, no, you're not gonna go up there and put in a new water bar, put in a new culvert. Uh, and we've actually given a couple of lawyers almost cop-like, uh, permission, like David Goodhouse when he fixed the road all the way, almost all the way to Chase Four Corners so he could get up there. After he did that, I drove up there with my pickup and two wheel drive, all the way, no problems. Uh, but that was on him and that's the way we've treated that, pretty much. You wanna fix it up? What are you gonna do? Where are the guidelines? Go ahead.
So. You've given GMHA permission to do, well, cemetery road. Guess we washed out twice, we've spent thousands of dollars up there, putting in new culverts and all the fill and everything else.
So, when GMHA wants to improve a road, you go to the select board?
Ray, Ray came to us after the, uh, two thousand and eleven, what?
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
It took it right out from, uh, up by Andy Hall's road, all the way down to the sharp corner to foot of the hill. We said, we don't need that road. The town said, so, we weren't gonna fix it. Ray came and said, if we, can we fix it so that we can at least get, get wide enough for horses to ride on it? And we said, sure. And they, he told us what they were gonna do. And we said, sure. It's my understanding, and I haven't ridden it, but it's my understanding that it's even wider now, so if you have a horse and buggy, you could go back there.
No, there's, there's still a section that's really narrow. In fact, we, we had to redo that culvert again last year after one of those bad thunderstorms. Took that culvert up again. But there's, in the, after you get down and past, um, you get the name of the guy that lives off on the left there.
Stair.
Very, yeah.
Stair.
Yeah. After you buy yourself, there's still a real narrow section.
Right there, next to your, right there, this is down.
Yeah.
John?
I think the other thing, effectively what we're talking about tonight is climate change.
Yeah.
And we don't get the rainfalls we got years ago. Now we get these, like, old deli washers. And I don't think that's gonna go away. So, maintaining these bad roads that we talk about, much more involved because of the kind of weather patterns we have. And that, I think, has really, I remember when we used to do Jeep rides years and years ago, not much happened between one year and the next, but now with all the water and things, you can lose a road almost overnight.
Oh, yeah.
The way it is. And so, when you're looking at planning and zoning, that, that weather is a big factor on these Class Four roads and going home and crazy. And I've made a few of them lately, I can testify that, uh, I, good thing I had my head, their friends' vehicle behind me, to get to some, some property.
Well, it's just our, our road. I mean, St. Pierre's a major line item for us every year now because it's just after these downpours.
Well, your road, you know, your road too, must have, it's flooded.
We're, we're constantly getting trucks delivered. Every rainstorm.
So, when they have these Jeep rides, what's different about the Jeep rides of old and the new caravans of today?
For the, this fourth, the Fourth of July, if you had a four-wheel drive, you'd give it to the group running it, the department, whoever it was, and you could go on and get the Jeep and wow, it was something, the old saw and hole, when the old schools were, and there was a route. And it, pretty much, you'd be doing it every year and then I forgot which storm it was, wiped it out and you never had a chance. All the old trails stayed as trail and you could do it with, with a Jeep. The rains and the storms took that whole area out. And so, I don't know, but how long had it been since we've had Jeep rides? Thirty years?
More than that.
I think more than that.
I think seventy-three was the year that did us in.
Yeah, there was a big flood.
The Jeeps weighed about two thousand pounds. The vehicles they use now on these roads weigh eight thousand pounds.
Well, to clarify too, it sounds like the Jeep rides were to tour around and get from point A to point B, not to linger in the muddiest hole you can find and dig it down to the ledge.
In, in a very dry season, on or about the Fourth of July. Uh, and I would say that a lot of the roads back then, uh, had vegetation on them. They had grass in the middle and in the wheel trucks. And Agony Hill, or Kai's Mountain Road, as we call it now, and Ridge Trail, there was two of them, that you could go over them because of its vegetation. Once that vegetation left, you were down the ledge. And at this point in time, when you get to that point, unless you put it two feet deep, you're not gonna hold it. And unless it grows quickly, you're not gonna hold it on Ridge Trail and Agony, I call it Agony Hill, because that's what it was always called. That's the same situation, uh, from Malakash down to Hamlesville.
So, the Jeep ride was just one time in the summer?
Yes.
It wasn't multiple weekends or?
No, and it was probably twelve, fifteen Jeeps. And like Ray said, they were little small Jeeps. Even the Jeeps today are much larger than what those were.
These, these are real Jeeps, they're the worst.
Yeah, the old Willys.
You still see some of the signs of, they're, they're red and, red and yellow signs, you still see those in trees everywhere.
They were the, they were the offshoot of the World War II Jeeps that were built specifically for that and about that size. Two people in the back, two people in front, that was it.
Sounds fun.
And then, hey, you had, uh, Agony Hill, you know, a town road person always liked to hunt, the only dude who would, three knee, here's he, he'd come down with a grader and make a little improvement, Agony Hill, he'd cross the road. That was another story in the past.
So, for example, I feel like we have a wealth of knowledge here tonight, so I'm just gonna keep asking questions. If you see advertised, say, online for a work weekend, to work on the Class Four roads, to cut trees and dig things, repair water. to cut trees and dig things, repair water bars, is that something that should be going to the select board?
I, I think if an organization that we've given permission to in the past, like the Rats, was going to do it, Mike, I can't think of his last name, from Auburn, he would normally give us a call and say, hey, we're going up there this coming weekend and see if we can fix it up so that it's, it's usable. And I do know that he and another group went up right after the ice storm and took out at least forty, his comment was at least forty trees between the Brown Schoolhouse Road and McIlvee Pond, so he could get through. I haven't been over there to check it, I'm going to. I'm going to take my ATV and go there and tear it up, no.
Doing the right-
I'm going to ride over and see what's written on it, but I, I haven't been.
I, I've noticed, I haven't been up Kittredge in a little while. But I've noticed on the Rich Trail, there used to be some culverts that have been, they look like they've been dug out. So now, instead of a culvert kind of channelling water through in an orderly way, it's turned into a big-
I think-
Water.
Yeah, waterbar, what we call the waterbar. And I think Jeff did a lot of that.
Yeah, he did that.
Culvert may have been out pied or it may have been damaged and took it out.
Way up at the top like that?
Uh, well, I don't know exactly where they are, but he might have.
He went up as far as the turnoff that goes over into Nef.
Yeah. It may be past that, what I'm thinking about, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I haven't been up there in several weeks, but, you know, maybe he's going to pass that for the, for the sugar operation. Because, you know, they still got all the-
Yeah.
There are ten, fifteen thousand trees up there.
Well, I don't think he's got so many as he had before the ice.
No.
This, this actually started, if you remember the two thousand eleven flood, when West Out goes to Route Four way into, into Robin, and that's what really started this whole downward spiral. Because after that, we kept having one storm every year or two after another. That's what really started the demise of, we'll say, the class four roads and trails. That was the beginning of it, really. When you think about that, that's fifteen years ago.
Well, I, only from personal experience, because I'm not out running around on these, these class four roads. But just our trails and our driveway, I mean, the storms just, they raise havoc with all of them.
Yeah, they do.
I mean, where we had filled before in nice grass, there's a stream bed, you know, dried up right now. But during the spring, it's just full out stream coming off the hill. So I think the climate has a major impact. And I, I do agree that the traffic also has a major impact.
Yeah.
I think we're dealing with, with a few different factors and the deterioration of the roads.
I think that's right. All right. Unless anyone has other anecdotes they want to relay, we can move off this topic. But if you have an opinion of, you know, if you think to yourself, if we only did X, it would help. Any thoughts on solutions?
I think you should reach out to the people who own the property on the class four roads and ask them what would be the perfect solution. I mean, if, if Wrist Hill, we know that's the Gris, Griswell?
No, no.
That's a different guy.
That's Rich Trail.
Oh, Rich.
Rich is Wiswell.
Griswell, yeah, Jeffrey.
Right, you should reach out to those people and ask them what, because we could sit here all day and say, oh, well, this would be great, this would be great. But I think the property owners really should have a-
Yeah.
Well, we got a very, we got a very good overview from Jeffrey Griswell.
I'm sure there's tons of other properties that have class four roads in it.
I think in the case of Wrist Hill, and talking to several people, they have some sort of HOA about roads. I don't know what the details are, but I had talked to a couple of people and I don't know any details about it. But there, then there was something in the original development for that, you know, Robert?
I don't know what the HOA is, no.
Well, it's just, it's, it's maintaining your property, if everybody chipped in so much money or you give money for dues and you take care of your property.
Well, I think-
Home improvement, that's a good question.
In, in the perfect HOA world, how that should have worked is there should have been an association with the fund.
They were giving a HOA about roads, I know they were linked.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of negativity up there. I mean, I, when I was running for the select board, I heard a mountain-
It's not even good, because that way you get it from the end to home.
Yeah, yeah.
And they, they may not want to go to class three road, when you don't know it.
Because I could sit here and say, oh, we should give her both class four roads, they should all be trails, so nobody's driving through anybody's property. But a lot of people use them for recreation, just like you were saying, and the four wheel drive. So maybe speak to the property owners and they would know better what-
Yeah.
A happy medium is, you're not going to get everything you want, but.
No, I mean, the, the goal is to kind of keep publicizing this in the Front Porch Forum and the agenda for a couple meetings and if we haven't gotten people to come to us, we should probably reach out to various constituencies and get their feedback.
I'm thinking, I mean, you're dealing with Freddie Heights. And they want to do some type of development, I don't know what all the details are. But I think for protection of the town, it may be good if there was an HOA for them to make it clear their private roads, if that ever happened, you know.
Reading Heights, what's reading?
Is this the new act?
I think behind the town road.
That's the, the-
The one that we sold the permit, the active permit for.
If that ever happened, they need to-
Oh, it's called Reading Heights? Okay. Because there was a Reading Heights way back when, right?
Yeah, but it, no, it's developed into anything, but it's the same property.
Oh, it's the same property now?
You want an update on that?
Yes, please.
I had a long talk with a lady at two fifty.
Yeah.
And I was telling her about our concerns, my concerns as zoning administrator, because there's been no subdivision plan filed or requested. I went back to when it was surveyed in two thousand five, if it's not surveyed, there's anything more than one large lot. And I said, now I've got a plan in front of me for eleven, I think it was eleven lots.
Thirteen?
Fifteen.
One oh six and Agony Hill.
Whatever, too many.
Sorry.
How many?
I heard fifteen.
Jane thinks fifteen, Stacy thinks thirteen, you think eleven.
And I'm thinking of nine.
A bunch of lots.
Okay, yes.
It's thirteen, it's in the letter list, so it's was thirteen. So I'm sorry, Bob, cutting you off again.
This way, this way, I'm ninety years old, I wouldn't do anything up there with my mapping work.
So anyway, the result of the conversation was, or before the conversation, I got out the new zoning map. And that is now, since 2022, listed as twenty-five acre zoning. So the best they can do is six lots.
And it's-
Fifty-three acres.
It's also wildlife corridor and deer wintering habitat.
Yeah, they can get around that.
They can.
It's, it's tough. Anyhow, when I talked with that two fifty, the lady said, well, if I was you, Bob, I wouldn't lose any sleep whatsoever over it because here's the conversation that's now six months old with Peter Campbell. And apparently, he called and sent her the same plan that we got. And she called me back and talked about it, not knowing that it was twenty-five acre zoning. And said, well, you have not done a subdivision. Well, I don't intend to do a subdivision, I'm going to sell the lot and then let them worry about it. And she says, no, that's not the way it works. You have to get the subdivision before you can sell the lot. And he said, well, I had heard that lots in Reading are in Vermont, were going for a high amount of money, so I thought I could make some money. She says, well, you can, but you got to go through the process. And his comment was, and excuse my language, well, to hell with it, that I'm not going to go any further. So she has not heard from him since February. And this is just a couple of years ago, I talked to her. So she told me, she said, Bob, I think the whole project's dead. And I told her, just be aware, it's twenty-five acre zoning. And she says, well, that would certainly tip you over the edge when he calls and finds out you can only do six acre lots if he can get permission. So that's where that stands.
Thank you for that update. So the dream of good quality, modest, affordable housing off one oh six is not to be too bad.
Adding six, adding six million dollars to our grand list, darn it.
Another thing today too, the cost of doing, putting in this wiring for that
Oh, that's true.
is, would be extremely expensive, just for a few lots.
Yeah.
So when you put that all together, I agree with Robert, I don't think we, it's on the radar for at least a while.
Well, good to know.
Yeah, thank you.
It could be good, but it has to be feasible, right? Um, great, I think if there's nothing more to add on this tonight, we've probably played the conversation out for tonight. I think the goal is to publicize this more widely for the next time with a little more advance notice and try to reach out to specific constituencies personally to see if they want to weigh in on this. Anything else before we move on? We're in the other business part of the agenda. Stacy?
Oh, sorry.
Abandoned vehicles?
Uh, abandoned vehicles, uh, let me just pull this up. So we're talking about, we're speaking about this as, in response to an email we received from someone in the public, a resident. So, and there are a few properties that I think that they were honing in on. So if you have unregistered vehicles, you can have up to three unregistered or uninspected vehicles on a property without any permit. If you have three or more, you have to give some sort of a pronoun, and I didn't dig into it any further than that.
It was a state law?
It's a state statute.
So up to three means three or two?
Well, two, two and then three and over, you would have to get a special permit. And I'm not sure what that special, I would assume it's something like-
Junkyard.
A junkyard.
Basically.
Yeah. So-
A holding lot.
There is no limit, just for all of our knowledge, there's no limit to the number of cars people can have registered on a given property. There is some sort of murky gray area about whether it has, they have to be parked in a garage on a paved driveway or a gravel driveway. They can't just, you can't have twenty cars parked on a grass lawn.
Good to know.
And then the, the, drilling in a little bit further, junk cars, you want to store them in a way that doesn't create a nuisance or a hazard to the public.
I think they have to be fenced from the public right away.
Say that again, Bob?
I think they have to be, there has to be a fence or something, so they can't be seen from the public right away.
And it, it does say that in this way, you will need to secure, you will need to secure to face any interruption from local authorities. So screen them, back to our screening conversation.
So if there's an issue with the property, who's, Chase is that? Is that a select board? Chase?
No, I think it's the planning commission.
I don't think so.
Yes.
I feel like I have any enforcement.
It's the select board.
Okay.
And then the state statute, it would go beyond the select board. Like, it, it could, if it becomes a junkyard, then I would imagine the environmental agency would get involved.
We got to that point, did we investigate it, Stacy? But I would expect you're right.
Okay, thank you for the update. So I think that's off of our plate and onto the select boards if the select board chooses to do anything. And I, I think we forwarded that email to you, but I'll look back and forward it again if you want.
I, I don't recall, but you may have.
Maybe we just asked the question and didn't forward the email. I'll, I'll find it, there might have been a letter.
It was an email.
It was an email.
Okay. Any other new business?
I don't have any.
Any other public comments about anything that anyone wants to share?
I have a nosy question.
Of course.
What's going on with the hardware store?
Oh.
I don't know.
I think he's moving his stuff out.
They're emptying it for a couple days.
I think he's clearing it out, preparing for something in the future.
Oh, really? Interesting. Nice.
Yeah.
That little van that got over there, they're going to make a lot of traction.
Yeah.
True. I miss that hardware store. Just to go there all the time, they always had exactly what you needed.
That place was crap.
Well, years ago, you called up and said, I need this screw or bolt, taking that one up and getting it for you.
I love that. Do you know that Ludlow has an abandoned building, a vacant building ordinance? That requires an annual registration and a fire inspection? Just throwing that out there. All right, if we have no other business to transact tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
Favorit?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.